Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor Teresa Tomlinson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pop Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Proton, and District 4. Mike Baker, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Tom Buck, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. Skip Henderson, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Tiny Washington, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the March 15th special call meeting of the Columbus City Council. Today is a work session. We have one action item on our agenda, but then we have a work session related to our auditorium and some funding issues we're having. We're so glad to have you here. We have a lot of stakeholders from our community and we appreciate your interest in these important issues we have to discuss. We're going to get started with the invocation. We have Dr. Michael Stewart here from the Pastoral Care of Columbus Regional Health Center, and we're so glad to have you with us this morning. Good morning.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let us pray. Oh Lord, our God, who is God of order and justice and is pleased when people are governed and are governed according to your will, I ask you in the name of Jesus Christ to bless this city and its inhabitants. Bestow your guidance on these, your magistrates. Keep them mindful of their sacred trust. Grant them wisdom for their difficult tasks. Give them a sense of honesty and decency, a spirit of humility and service, and a sensitivity to the needs of every citizen. Give to all who live here a grateful heart for the advantages we enjoy and ready obedience to our laws and a profound concern for the rights and privileges of every citizen of this city. Protect our city, Father, from all calamities and epidemics, and shield us from those temptations which might overtake us. Bless this city. May more who live here find their way to the eternal city whose foundation, whose builder that you are. Thank you for this great day. This is the day you have made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it. It's in Christ's holy name that I pray. Amen.
Dr. Stewart, thank you so much for being here, and thank you for bringing compassionate care and support to those at Columbus Regional. We appreciate what you all do for our community. And next, well, we're supposed to have Rigdon Road Elementary School, but this has been a special call meeting. They may have been waylaid, so I'm going to ask if you'd stand and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe we have, although it's not on the agenda, I'm going to turn it over to the City Attorney, I think is the first action item we have for today's meeting. Mr. Fay.
Thank you, Mayor. If you look at the City Manager's Agenda, we have the tax allocation districts. This is the river development plan with three separate tax allocation districts. The first one on the agenda is the Sixth Avenue Liberty District, and it is ready for adoption.
Okay. And Mr. City Attorney, I apologize. I didn't realize that was on your agenda.
Okay.
It's on the City Attorney's Agenda, but I got your mic up in case you want to address. All right. To the Liberty District, we have several questions. We have Counselor Glenn Davis.
Madam Mayor, I just want to make it public again that I will be abstaining from the vote pertaining to the Uptown District. I've already made a public statement on it, and I just want to state it once more. I will probably need a motion to recuse myself.
Should we wait till we get to that one, Mr. Stewart? So there won't be any confusion about any vote you take on this item? Okay, we'll do that. Counselor Davis, thank you. We'll bring that up, and should I forget? Prod me on that, but when we move to the next item, we will. Mayor Proton.
I just have a question in your own TADs. Who decides in each one of these TADs what projects are going to be done in them?
All right, let's get a formal answer on that.
Richard Bishop with Uptown Columbus. Each project will be decided by a developer. A developer will come into an area and decide what projects they may and may not want to do, but after that, the projects only get approved after they go through an application process with the city and they come to City Council for approval. So at the end of the day, council has final say on every project.
Okay, is there a board in each one of the TAD areas that the developer will go to first?
I didn't understand the question.
Let the City Attorney answer that. There's a policy.
This council, you have designated yourself by ordinance as the common redevelopment agency, and you are going to decide each specific project. Now, if necessary, we'll have a contract with a development authority for certain bond issuances or other formal matters, but this council, you have designated yourself as the ultimate legislative authority on all projects.
Okay. And in the TAD design, I don't know what word I want to use, does it say what can be used, what money can be used for and what it can't? Does it spell out in TAD?
Ken, you want to give into the depth of that?
You mean the...
As far as infrastructure?
The growth during the time of the period of the TAD, that would also come back to this council. Someone could make a request or apply, or the city could make a request or apply, and then this council would decide.
Well, just say if they had $100,000, does it specify what that $100,000 can be used for?
You have three ways that occurs. One is the State Enabling Act says what's permissive. The city has adopted a TAD policy which narrows that into the things that you want to see funded, and then they have to specifically request the money for a specific purpose.
Okay.
So you get to review that and say, you know, we either approve that or disapprove that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Woodson.
Yes, I just need a little clarification because I thought we were going to look at voting on either Option 1, Option 2, or Option 3.
You did that last time.
During the...
Didn't we take a vote on that last time?
We did that at the last meeting.
And you were not here, you had to leave.
Well, these notes here doesn't say the vote was taken. It says, these notes I say here, they were going to wait to the next two.
Flip it on the other side.
Wow.
Oh, there's more. Okay. And what option?
Well...
Okay. All right. Thank you. Gary, my golden trusted buddy.
And let's just confirm, since Counselor Woodson asked that a vote was taken, is that correct? I seem to recall a motion and a second and a vote.
The vote was taken, and it's the option that would leave Golden Park out.
Yes.
And South Commons would remain in.
Yeah. Option 2.
That's right. I think it was Option 2.
Okay. That seems to conclude the discussion at this time. Is, oh, let's see, we have Counselor Huff.
In adding South Commons back to the piece we talked about last week, and you said basically for infrastructure type needs, repairs, and things of that nature. I recall years ago, and looking back, we did some work on the South Commons area, and that money was spent there first. So what will be determined, in fact, if we have some monies and we need something done coming Sixth Avenue, this toward the Liberty District versus South Commons, how do we decide?
This council will decide.
They'll decide here?
Yeah. Any use of those dollars would have to come back to this council for approval, whether it be the developer making a request or the city making a request to use those dollars. You'll have the approval authority.
Because last time, we did some work at South Commons, and it took years later to get the monies again to come to other directions. So this time, we'll determine here?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Good. And that appears to conclude discussion on Item 1, which is TAD Number 2, the Sixth Avenue Liberty District. So we'll entertain a motion.
Send them to the adoption.
Okay. We've got a motion and second for adoption. Can I cue this to vote? I'm going to try to cue it to vote. How about that? All right. Is this designated specifically for the Liberty District? Okay, and you can record your votes electronically. And it passes.
And Madam Mayor, if the City Attorney wants to do my agenda...
No. [laughter]
Well, you can handle your agenda, but let's get a motion to let Counselor Davis abstain on the Uptown.
Okay, we've got a motion and second to allow Counselor Davis to abstain for the grounds upon which he stated and is made a part of our record, a formal record.
This is for the Uptown vote.
For the Uptown vote only. Okay. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And so at this point, we'll turn the City Manager's Agenda over to the City Manager.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and we now have two TADs. TAD Number 1 was Benning Technology Park, and you've just approved TAD Number 2, and so this is the Uptown TAD, and we've had much discussion on it, and it's ready for vote.
Hold on a second. Yeah, we haven't voted on that yet. We voted on you being abstained, not from the actual thing.
But he can be in the room. He don't have to leave. He just don't vote.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So you got about, yeah, a few more minutes. We'll come get you.
Madam Mayor, and Counsel, the Uptown TAD is ready for vote.
Yeah, he can't be part of discussion, I guess, just on the safe side. Mr. City Manager, you said, I'm sorry.
The Uptown TAD is ready for vote.
All right. Thank you. We've got a motion and second for approval. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll cue it for electronic vote, and you may record your vote. All right, and it passes.
And now we have three TADs in Columbus, and the final TAD...
Okay, let's go get Counselor Davis real quick.
I know, I've never seen anyone leave before.
Yeah, usually it's, well, I'll let the city, usually it's a recusal from vote. This is recusal from discussion and vote, but yeah, go ahead. Hold on a second. Let's let the...
This was a little different because in the state law on TADs, you have to, once you disclose that you might have an interest, you have to refrain from any discussion and the vote, so.
And so, TAD Number 4 is Second Avenue City Village. It's ready for vote.
Okay, we've got a motion and second for approval. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, it is cued for voting. And it passes.
And so, congratulations to Mr. Richard Bishop, President and CEO of Uptown, and to Mr. Robert Anderson and all of the Sixth Avenue people, and Justin Creed and others related to Second Avenue and City Village. And Mr. Ken Blakely, we can't thank you enough for all of what you've done to help educate us and to make sure that we actually know the ins and outs of TADs. So thank you, Mr. Ken Blakely, and congratulations to you.
Great. We have Counselor Woodson. Did you have a...
Yes, I wanted to just reassure some of the constituents and council members that might be concerned about the Liberty Theater area with the vote that we just took. What needs to happen is the stakeholders in that area and that community that for years wanted to develop it, and for some reason or another, we can never get on the same page, this is the time to hurry up and get on the same page so that the city or somebody else doesn't come in and take advantage of the funding. So I make out a cry and a plea to all those that are interested in the Liberty Theater. Let's get on that train and get it off the station. And secondly, Mr. Barclay, again, I can't remember your name, I just wanted to say to you, thank you very much, and I hope your phone is ready and available. In case we have any questions, we can call you and say, this is going on, can I do this, or can I do this? Okay? And thank you all very much for your patience and hard work and your phone calls and your emails. It all worked, and it's a blessing to our city thanks to your volunteer work.
Great. Thank you.
I'm Reynolds Bickerstaff, 8000 Midland Road, Midland, Georgia. Just want to thank you all for the time, the questions, and the due diligence you've done. We really appreciate that because we think this is going to be great for our community, and we look forward to bringing some projects in the future, hopefully make each of these areas a thriving community. Thank you all very much.
Great. Thank you all.
And Madam Mayor, I would just remind those here and those watching that these TADs will start January 1, 2017, and so they're not effective during the 2016 calendar year.
Okay. All right.
Madam Mayor, as we prepare to talk about Aquatic Center funding options, I want to remind you that we had the NAIA Swim Competition Event here a week or so ago. It was an excellent event with great economic impact, and I think we've got about a two-minute video that we'd like to show, and we're going to ask Mike King to run that video.
All right.
One, two, three. Remember the infamous words, "If you build it, they will come." Well, they did, as swimmers made a huge splash at the Columbus Aquatic Center for the 2016 NAIA Men's and Women Swimming and Diving National Championship, held right here in Columbus, Georgia. The NAIA, which governs the athletic programs of smaller colleges and universities, brought together over 200 athletes from 29 schools to compete in this four-day national championship meet. Competitors came from all over the country, like Tennessee, South Dakota, West Virginia, South Carolina, as well as...
Oregon.
Biola, California.
We're from Southern California.
But our daughter swims for Idaho.
Our daughter goes to school in Idaho.
Born in Philadelphia and currently from California.
I'm from Oklahoma. I swim for St. Gregory's. That's in Shawnee.
I'm from Bradley, Illinois.
Burbane.
Along with many other locations, to name a few. Also, the Columbus Aquatic Center made quite the impression on our visitors.
Oh, I love it. Love it. It's very nice. It's a very nice facility. I was very happy when I walked into the doors. This is nice pool. The water feels so great.
I like it. It's a nice facility. It's fan-friendly, and I just feel like it was, it's conducive to having the kids compete very fast and very good.
The facility is top drawer. The first year you guys have run this tournament has been wonderful.
Now, to be outdone, the Fountain City itself left its impressionable mark.
I'm enjoying Columbus. I've been here since Tuesday, and I've gotten to know the area. We've gone out, we just went down to the Riverwalk today, so I think it's a great town.
Oh, so far, so good. We haven't really had a chance to get out and see a whole lot because we've been here for the event, but people are friendly.
But you have trees.
And you have trees.
It's beautiful.
We have seen southern hospitality. We love the trees.
We went over to the library. That's right next to the pool, and that was really nice. It's a huge library, and I thought that was really cool.
The women of Savannah College of Art and Design from Savannah, Georgia, better known as SCAD, took home the title and its third national championship. Meanwhile, the men of Olivet Nazarene from Illinois took home the hardware and its first-ever national crown. And as far as Columbus hosting the event again, our visitors wouldn't mind that at all.
Coming from Columbus, Ohio, to Columbus, Georgia via California, you guys do it really well.
So we had a lot of Parks and Rec employees to volunteer, Red Church, the Sports Council, just phenomenal, but I think they did a great job.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to share that with you. With that, let us get into what this day is for, and that's to talk about the Aquatic Center funding options. And let me just make a few just brief comments while Dr. Worsley and Deputy City Manager Finance, Plan Development, Pam Hodge make their way to the podium. But we were told, and we've been going through this for some time now, and you know that Parks and Rec, they are managing the facility on an interim basis as we move forward with a third-party vendor. But we were told whatever it takes financially to keep the Aquatic Center fully operational would have to come from Parks and Recreation. Dr. Worsley and staff then submitted a list of 17 potential funding options, which included cuts in funding to other programs and services within the Parks and Rec Department. We were then asked to provide the impact of the potential cuts to programs, services, and agencies. In other words, we were asked to be specific. Council called for a work session on the Aquatic Center to discuss funding options. We were asked for concrete numbers to look at and to work with, as well as concrete logical suggestions from the administration on where to go and get some of this money. The discussion today is based on these directions and those discussions. This will indeed be a discussion, and we're going to need direction from the mayor and council in order to move forward with making the Aquatic Center fully operational. And so, as Dr. Worsley and Deputy City Manager and others will present today those funding options, we're going to be the messenger today to provide that concrete information being very specific. And it could potentially be a painful discussion. We acknowledge that, but sometimes it takes painful discussion to get to a resolution. And so, we're going to go through the 17 options, and we're going to be very specific about how, if you elect a particular option, it will impact Parks and Rec or other agencies, how it will impact your constituents, the citizens, how it will impact the children who rely on facilities, the adults who rely on facilities, and how it would potentially impact seniors who rely on these facilities. And so, we'll do the 17, and we'll have the discussion, and what you don't have in your packet now is our recommendation that after we go through the discussion of the 17, then we'll come back and we'll hand you a slide with what we are recommending today. And we've done that, you know, we had one meeting where we provided the handout, and we know, just like everybody else, you go straight to what's being recommended. And we got into the discussion of what was being recommended, and we never heard about the options. And so, that's why we're doing that. So with that, I'm going to turn to Dr. Worsley, and we will proceed through those 17 funding options.
Thank you, City Manager. Good morning, the mayor and council. We appreciate the opportunity to be before you on this morning to talk about this very important topic of the Columbus Aquatic Center. One of the things we're going to talk about first during this particular presentation is our hotel motel tax. I'm going to introduce Pam Hodge, our Deputy City Manager, to come forward and talk about that at this time. We're going to tag team this morning somewhat, so you will hear from both of us throughout this discussion. Ms. Hodge?
Good morning. The first option that we briefly discussed last week, and we're going to provide some additional information, is redirecting the portion of hotel motel tax. Currently, it's allocated the 8%, 2% to the Civic Center, 1% to the River Center, 1% to the Trade Center, and 4% to the CVB. Reallocation of this legislative discretion of project funding that was done through local legislation in 2009, that's Resolution 565-08, provides for the option to reallocate the hotel motel tax. We did pass out letters from each of the agencies that receive hotel motel tax. What we asked them to do was provide us what the impact would be if some or all of the hotel motel tax was redirected from those agencies. And those letters are provided for you. Just in summary, the Civic Center and the Trade Center being city functions, any reduction to those agencies would require additional general fund support, so it kind of would not make sense to us to make reductions to those particular agencies and then have to turn around and require additional funding from the general fund or change in operations for those city-run functions. The River Center is a state facility. The only local state dollars that they receive is from the hotel motel tax. The state does not provide any funding to the River Center, nor does CSU, who also shares in the facility operations and is housed partially in that facility. So their funding comes from hotel motel tax and then from event funding. And you can see the impact that they've laid out in their letter would require some changes to their operation if hotel motel tax was redirected. And the CVB, which serves as the destination marketing organization, they've also provided the impact for reduction or changes to the hotel motel tax. They do provide 1% of that 4% to the Sports Council, and they also provide some grant funding to the Arts Alliance, and that's through a grant program that they have, and that's included in the letters from those particular agencies. Adding the Columbus Aquatic Center to the mix of the agencies that are funded would fall under the tourist product development allocation, and that could be done. We've talked to the City Attorney's Office about that, and adding the Columbus Aquatic Center to the equation is permissible by the state law. 565-08, I can put it up on the screen. I did not make copies, but I can put that up on the screen, and we can run some copies and provide that for you.
Yeah, let's run copies, and we can put it up. Well, it's, how many pages is it?
It's just one page, but it's very generic, but we'll get copies to you in just a few minutes.
Okay. Pam, how much is the grant program you mentioned of the 4% of the CVB? What, how much is the grant program for the performing
Don't know off the top of my head, but I can look. And Peter might know off the top of his head. Do you know what the grant program?
It's based off a percentage of the remainder for operating of the CVB, so it's roughly about 13% in real dollars. It averages about $200,000 a year for a tourism grant for arts.
And how many organizations or programs do you typically fund with it?
Well, it depends year to year. It's based off a criteria that's created, that's been created over the years, and we've had as few as half a dozen, and we've had as many as 18 agencies apply for that grant.
So if there's no other questions on hotel motel tax, we'll move on to the next option, and we'll provide you a copy of that resolution.
We've got Counselor Allen. Okay.
I just want to make sure I understand the slide Each, each 1% represents $600,000? Is that what you're saying? Each, each one percent represents $600,000, is that what you're saying?
Yes, each one percent.
Okay. What is the total, excuse me, what is the total amount received from the, total revenue received in the hotel motel tax?
Hotel motel tax ranges from about 4.8 to five million a year. So, 600,000 for each of the eight percentages.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
We have Counselor Huff.
Is it possible, in the consideration, to have an audit done of the hotel motel tax to know what we've been doing in the past and where we are?
We had approached council several years ago to do a hotel motel tax audit on the hotels. What the recommendation was originally was three large, three medium, and three small, just to do a sampling of that, and then if we found any discrepancies, then we would expand the audit. At the time, council did not approve moving forward with that audit, but we're happy to bring that back and, and think that that's a good idea on a regular basis to do that type of an audit.
So, we'll know what the real numbers are?
Well, I mean, we know what we collect, but we have not done an audit on the hotels to validate that what they're remitting to us is accurate. So, we, we can definitely bring that back as an option.
Okay.
And Counselor Huff, we truly welcome having an audit. It's needed. In our opinion, we felt that a number of years ago, and, and we've had conversation about it in recent weeks. It's something that needs to be done.
Well, is it proper to request it at this point?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'd like to request an audit. Okay.
Does, does it take a motion, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, second. You're talking about an audit of the hotel motel tax.
Are you talking about the internal auditor doing this, or somebody external?
Mr. City Manager, what was proposed originally?
This would be external. It would be done through a vendor, through G M A, I believe they have a vendor, or we could, or we could use our external auditor.
We'll get pricing on that, and you can come back.
Oh, yeah, we'll get it.
So, they're, they're saying that they'll get pricing. Y'all aren't always talking on the mic. So, they're saying they're going to get pricing and determine a vendor, I guess pursuant to our procurement process?
Absolutely.
And then there'll be a process through which, would you say, three small, three medium, and three large will be randomly chosen?
Well, I think we'll come back to you with a recommendation. I don't necessarily, we've got fifty-four hotels, and certainly, they could randomly select large, medium, and small, but I, I don't know that we should limit it to three in each category. And so, we'll, we'll have some discussion about it and make a recommendation to you at the time that we price it, both through our external auditor and through the G M A vendor.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, a second, further discussion. We have Counselor, well, we have Counselor Pugh first, and then Counselor Davis and Huff.
I was just going to say, I know in being at G M A board meetings, almost all audits they did, they saved cities money.
They found money.
They found money.
Found money. Yeah. All right, Counselor Davis?
I just wanted to say, Mr. City Manager, if you're going to do an audit, the right thing to do is to do it across the board. I think last time we had discussion, it was more of a random aspect, which I think there was a concern of discrimination somewhat, and I use that word lightly, okay? But I, I think at that time that I talked with the Deputy City Manager about this matter that it's not a complicated process to get a look at, from a standpoint of where the hotel motels are and paying their, their hotel motel taxes. You only have to look at a few line items to do that. I think at that time, and it can be done in-house, we've, we had that conversation. It's not that difficult. It would take some time. I think we now have a forensics auditor that can help and assist from this standpoint. I would be opposed to paying anybody, a vendor, to come in and do a hotel motel audit. I think if you see reason in, in the future that there needs to be more extensive, I think there's, consideration should be taken. But I do believe that it's not that complicated, and it can be done in-house to determine if, if there's discrepancies in the payment of hotel motel tax.
Well, Mayor and Council, we will bring you a recommendation. And so, we'll take a look at the vendors and cost and whether we have the capacity to do it internally, which off the cuff, I don't think so, especially if we're going to do a full-blown audit of fifty-four hotels. And, and I think in, in past years, you know, we, we, there, we've had reported discrepancy in the STAR report versus what we receive at the city with hotel motel tax. In other words, you complete a report and you send it to STAR, and then you remit.
What is STAR?
That's the Travel.
Smith Travel Research?
Smith Travel Research. And so, they submit that information to them, and then they submit the funding to us and a report, and, and there's, there's, there's a discrepancy typically in the report. And it has varied up to twenty-five percent. And so, that has been concerning to us because we don't understand all of that. A twenty-five percent difference, and I don't know if it's the same person at the hotel submitting to us and then submitting to STAR, but there's a difference. And so, we, we need to figure out what that difference is, and so, an audit would help get to the bottom land. And so, we welcome it, and we will bring back recommendations.
Great, we have.
And, Mr. City Manager, just to that point, I think there's a lot of logic behind that and reasoning behind it. I don't think you'd solely go off of the STAR report because that's being based on who's reporting and how they're reporting, but there's a lot of factors that go into that that can change that variable. If you go to the individual properties, which you should, and look at their P and Ls, which they should produce, there's a few line items that will tell you the picture. The city audited the, one of the properties that I own and operate, and it wasn't a complicated process. So, I don't see any reason why it can't be done at the other, only, with the other properties unless it becomes an issue of, of time. I think you have, we now, at that point, we did not have an auditor, we did not have a forensics auditor, and it can be done, and it can be done in segments, which would also help from a standpoint of manpower and time.
There again, Counselor Davis, sitting right here today, I don't know, but we will certainly.
I'm just trying to help you. I'm trying to save you some money.
And I appreciate the help. I need all the help I can get, you know? But we will look at the options, and we will bring a recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
Great. Counselor Huff?
Yes, sir, I just make sure, my request is for a comprehensive audit, not a sampling.
Okay, great.
All right, good. Well, that's a lot of progress. All those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed? Okay.
Thanks, Ms. Hodge. The next, the next option looks at our recreational centers. Currently, the recreation centers operate forty-five, excuse me, forty-four hours per week. This particular option looks at a reduction of around fourteen hours less for a cost savings of about $450,000 over the course of, of the year. But I want to be very clear in terms of what this means for our citizens that utilize our recreation centers. Over 200,000 citizens, youth, seniors alike, come to the recreation centers throughout the course of a year. Having a reduction of fourteen hours over the course of a year means some great impacts for these citizens outside of just utilization of, for rental opportunities or just looking at this place being a safe haven for our youth that come to the, to the centers as well. It goes much beyond that. We're talking about impacting staff that work at these facilities in the terms of about the operating expenses, about thirteen part-time staff that we employ would be displaced when we start looking at reductions of the hours at this facility. Again, operational costs, including materials, motor fuel, and utility costs would be part of that reduction to achieve the cost savings that we're talking about here as well. Such programs would, would be affected, and these are just some examples. And you're just talking about mentoring and, mentoring and tutoring programs, sports and fitness classes that are offered at these facilities as well, and among others that can be identified. So, this is option two, where it looks at impacts for the recreation center.
Dr. Worsley, we have several questions.
Absolutely.
Doctor, I mean, excuse me, Counselor Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Worsley, do we, do we, do we have capability of tracking the, the number of people who are at the center at any given period of time? In other words, do we track it by day parts?
We track our numbers at the recreation centers for attendance, you're referring to, by month?
Total, monthly?
Monthly, and then we roll it into our annual report that we put out every year.
And, and the reason I'm asking, I think it's, it'd be really, really difficult to recommend cutting the hours without having some hard data on how many people and how many programs are displaced, and without knowing from, you know, in day parts, because like during, during the winter time, I would think most of these folks, most of the younger folks are in, in school up and, up until the two o'clock or two-thirty hour. Most of the folks impacted would be the seniors and adults who are utilized in a rec center. But that's a guess, so, you know, it's just, I don't know how this would be on the table just because we don't really have finite data, you know?
Understandable. I also want to show you potentially also what, what hours would potentially look like.
Yeah, and that's where I was getting at that second page, where it has the hours that you suggest in cutting.
That's right.
But that's what, that's what makes it kind of difficult, at least from my perspective, too.
Certainly.
Because I don't know where the bulk of the usage is, or if, if we tracked the, the day parts that these facilities were used, it might be easier for us to, you know, say, well, you know, cutting some hours on Monday and only open four to nine might, might only displace a handful of people.
Well, that's, that's kind of why we, we propose these hours based on what you're, what you're saying. Currently, the facility is open eleven, eleven to seven, Monday through Friday, and of course, Saturday, two to six, and close on Sundays. When we look at four to nine, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, you're focusing on this particular area. This is, you're looking at youth and young adults, people that work in the evening that are able to utilize the facilities after hours, whereas your seniors are focused on these particularly, because we have to look at everybody, we have to look at how we can cut the pie. And when we start cutting the pie, you're looking at Tuesdays and Thursdays mainly focused on senior citizens. Now, granted, we, if, if we had hours that would be available in an infinite amount of time, we can, we could block that time and fill it, fill the gaps. Our seniors would love to be there every day in the morning, as, as they are currently. But this is just an opportunity for you to see what it could potentially, could potentially look like.
Right. And I, and I, and I recognize the thought that went into it in terms of balancing, you know, young adults and then also seniors and people that can utilize it. But I just, it'd be easier, I think, if we actually had the hard data on, on who attends during those day parts. That would make it a little bit simpler, but, and I don't know if we have the capacity to, to gather that data, but that would be useful not only here, but also in the pools as we move forward and try to identify peak usage time.
Right. We, we do collect some data. I will say, we don't have the technology that we would like to be able to collect ongoing data that I, I think that you're, that you're talking about, the stats that some, there are some computers in our systems that departments have throughout the country that, such as a recreation program that when people register for programs, it, you can capture the, you know, ethnicity, you can capture age. We can capture some of those things through our old-fashioned way of doing business, and which we do, do that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We have Counselor Huff?
Good morning, Dr. Worsley.
Good morning.
I'm looking at the numbers and everything, and as we go through this, hopefully, we can find some of these options to fit for keeping the Aquatic Center open to full eighty-nine hours, but I'm not in support of affecting the youth and the seniors in my district as far as their activities and the kids that already have activities and a place to be. There's no reason to penalize them.
Okay, duly noted.
For what we're trying to accomplish. This has been working as far as your department, getting everything structured.
I'm sorry, I said that again.
I say, you, you, your department has been working to get everything structured to get the kids off of the street and a place to be. And the swim, swimming goes on all summer.
Absolutely.
And a lot of these children will not have transportation to come to the Aquatic Center. Some are in arts and crafts, some are in the gym, some are in different activities, games and things of that nature, the exercise programs for the seniors. So, as we go through, I'll be looking to see what I can find and, and assist, but I just hope we don't affect the kids and the seniors, you know, to take away from them just for the fact of keeping the Aquatic Center open eighty-nine hours. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Counselor Thomas.
Good morning, Dr. Worsley. I want to make sure that I know exactly what we're talking about here. When you say recreation centers, I know that in the recommendations that we received at our last meeting, there was a difference made with the senior centers. Does this recommendation that we have before us on the previous slide include all recreation centers, or does it exclude the senior citizens?
This particular one is focused on just the recreation centers. There's a different slide coming a little bit later down the road that's focused just on the senior center, and that would be a, a different discussion in the same vein, but it's, it's broken out to be different.
Okay, would you go back to the slide before this?
Certainly.
The piece that says decrease in operating expenses?
Yes, ma'am. You were like.
That will result, let me ask my question, okay? That will result in a $450,000 saving?
Yes, that's what we're saying here across our, across centers like Frank Chester Senior Center, Solomon Road.
Wait, 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 I thought you said senior citizens weren't included?
I'm sorry, I mean, recreation center, recreation center. The four, the four recreation centers, the super centers, we're talking about those, those centers. Twenty-Ninth Street is a recreation center. Our recreation center, I'm not focusing on the senior centers just yet. That's coming in, in another slide in just a few minutes.
Okay. But by decreasing those four recreation centers to the hours that you recommended?
We're talking about our eight recreation centers.
Excuse me, Dr. Worsley, could I ask my question?
Let's try to keep a civil tone all the way around.
I'm trying to keep a civil tone, Madam Mayor, but he keeps interrupting me.
Well, I think he's just anxious to get you the information he wants, which is a human reaction.
He doesn't know what I want until I ask my question.
And so, why don't you proceed, and let's all keep a civil tone.
Would you name the four recreation centers for me?
There are eight recreation centers. The four super centers, Solomon Road Recreation Center, Frank Chester, we have Shirley Winston and Northside, then we have the other four, Twenty-Ninth Street, Harbor Park, Boxwood, and, and Flue Ellen.
Okay, so, this, this represents all eight of those, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And by moving to the thirty hours a week, we will save $450,000?
Yes.
Okay. And in addition to what Counselor Henderson was saying about kids being in school, have you given any thought to having different hours during the school year and during the summer when the kids are out of school? Does that, would that make any, having, I'm saying, having the recreation centers open for a longer time during the summer when these kids are out and need the activity rather than in the winter when they're in school, or in the school year when they're at school? Have you given any thought to that?
Yes, we have given thought to that as well. We have our summer camp programs that help alleviate some of what you're, you're talking about, although we also feel that the children are in need of the services year-round, winter as well as summer months as well. But we have, we have had that as a discussion.
But your recommendation is on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays to wait until four o'clock in the afternoon to open these super centers, right? Isn't that what the next slide shows?
That is correct. Our summer camp programs, if, if, fill in the gap with some of what you're, what you're saying. So, summer, our summer camp programs operate out of our recreation centers. So, this, you're talking about public access when you're looking at this information here. Our summer camps would be in the facility perhaps all day long at these facilities as well. They're just not, they just wouldn't have public access. So, the youth would be in, would have to be enrolled in a summer camp to gain access during the morning, the morning hours as well.
And is there, and I assume there's an extra charge for the summer camp? Is there?
There is a charge for the summer camps, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, hold on a second. Let's.
Do you have a fees for the summer camp program?
Counselor Allen, and Counselor Huff, you'll have to requeue, I'm sorry. I think you were at the end anyway, so, done. Counselor Allen?
Mayor, could I ask a point of clarification? In the article that was in the paper.
In the article that was in the paper the other day, it talked about a, for lack of a better description, a shock protection system in the event of lightning or bad weather. For some reason, that was apparently taken out of the construction cost. It concerns me greatly that council was not notified that that piece was not going to be included in the facility since it is a public safety device. I would like for this council... I couldn't find it in this presentation. I would like for us to talk about that before we leave today and make a decision on that. I was just reading an email from the Hurricanes who have made a proposal to us to try to help offset that cost. They're willing to put forth half the cost of the $50,000. I'm assuming it's still $50,000. They've actually received a proposal from a local electric company. So I would like for us to engage in some conversation if we want to stop this and do it now. I would like to get an answer to that so that we can...
Well, we'll certainly do it before we go. I think you'll be impressed and edified by the information you'll hear at a much longer discussion about it. We've been in touch with the architect, who was astounded and appalled by the article in the paper. We've also been in touch with the Department of Health, who vehemently disagrees with some of that. And we've also been in touch with Georgia Tech, and they're trying to track down why they think they're exempt. It probably has something to do with their state sovereign, which counties and cities do not get. But there's a State Health Department regulation on books that no one can be in a pool when lightning is being... We have the actual language, but heard or seen or something like that. And so unless you're exempt from the State Health Department regulations, as Georgia Tech has apparently taken the position that they are because they're an arm of the state sovereign, so we'll have to apply to the state, I guess, Attorney General and see if they'll extend their state sovereignty to us so we can exempt ourselves, whether you have a lightning box or not, so we can get into that longer conversation.
Well, Madam Mayor, I've actually asked John Hutchison to be here to talk about that, and so he should have a brief PowerPoint presentation to talk about.
And I know, too, let's have that...
Yeah, today, at the end of the meeting.
And then also, we may have to even update it, because I know Lucy's trying to get in touch with the Attorney General Office, because there's no such published opinion that Georgia Tech says. And I know that we're also talking with the State Department of Health, so we may have to come back.
We had planned to talk about it anyway, and so I'd already asked him. Of course, you don't know that, but he has a PowerPoint that he's gonna...
We just have to make sure we're not trying to solve an issue and violating laws or regulations, obviously.
Well, the other... While I was waiting in queue, I saw that email. But the other point I wanted to bring up is before we start talking about addressing the hours of operation at an auditorium, I would like to have the input, more input, from the advisory group, the task force that we put together. But that's the swim community. They're the ones that better know what hours they need to operate around, and then we can fill in around that. But for us to sit here as a council and decide what hours we're gonna open before we hear from them, I think is the wrong approach. So I would like to...
Yeah, they did make a presentation of seventy-two hours.
I'm not sure that we're headed in that direction. What I heard discussed earlier did not include their presentation.
Right, well, I think we're going through this, but I think we're absolutely considering their recommendation of reducing to seventy-two hours. That will require less of an impact.
And certainly, Mayor, we can... You know, what we're talking about now, obviously, is rec center hours.
Right.
But when we, you know... We need roughly $500,000 to keep the aquatic center fully operational, whether it's eighty-nine hours or seventy-seven hours. And certainly, when we find the money, or if we find $500,000, $300,000, we can sit down with the task force, we can work with them, and whatever hours they want or agree. The issue... The immediate issue is whether we have the money or not. If we don't have the money, we don't need to talk about hours. And so if we find the money, we will get with them and say, look, we've got $300,000, or we've got $500,000, let's talk about hours and let's all agree. And when we all agree, we can come back here together and say, with that $400,000 or $300,000, $500,000 that you're gonna add to the eight-fifty, here's the full plan. And so that's what we are prepared to do.
As long as they're involved in setting the hours.
I absolutely agree. We will not do it, I can assure you, without them. We will not.
All right. Let's see, Mayor Proton.
Dr. Warsley, good morning.
Good morning.
Can we go back and talk about the forty-four change in the hours of operation for rec centers from forty-four to thirty hours per week? And I heard Counselor Thomas say something about four o'clock. What was that? Are we saying not having recreation centers open during the day until four o'clock in the afternoon?
That's a combination thereof, Counselor Pugh. And on Mondays, Wednesdays, and this is an example of what we've... Based on our knowledge of usage at the facilities, what we would have to make the schedule based on these thirty hours. And so Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays, yes, the facility will open from four to nine. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, the facility would open from nine to two in order to balance out those that utilize the facilities in the morning and those that utilize the facilities in the evening. No, it is not the most ideal situation to go from forty-four to thirty hours, but when you look at the limited number of hours, how best to cut the pie is what we're looking at here. And there is a one-to-six schedule on that Saturday and closed on Sunday.
I guess... And this is based on getting information from attendance information from each rec center?
That's correct. Based on getting attendance information from the rec center, the programs that currently are ready, they're in staff knowledge of those locations.
I just wonder what impact this will have on the senior citizens?
It's gonna have a great impact on seniors, it's gonna have a great impact on use... It's gonna have an impact on everyone that utilizes the facility. We don't sugarcoat that, not at all. But these are, again, this is an exercise that we have gone through to provide potentially what that could look like if council decided this was a viable option based on further recommendations.
And the reason I say about the senior citizens is by four o'clock in the afternoon, they're not at the centers. You know, they do their exercise programs in the morning. They do their... Whatever programs they have set up, theirs are usually in the mornings. And then they get out of the way so the young people can come. And I just think it will have a very detrimental effect closing those centers down in the mornings for our senior citizens, people who have earned that right over the years of longevity, to be able to go to those centers. And I'm not fussing at you, but I'm expressing my opinion to my fellow councils. Because I know how it is, once you get a certain age, and I'm up in that age group, you're not gonna be over there in the afternoons. You're gonna go in the mornings and get out of the way of the young people, because the older... The younger kids won't be there until they get out of school. So...
And we've got another slide coming up, James, about senior centers? Is that correct?
Senior centers, yes.
Okay, all right, let's keep on with...
Centers, centers, because like Shirley Winston, it's not a senior center, but you got people that... You got senior citizens who use Shirley Winstons in the morning.
Yeah. It's the same with the other rec center down in Carver there. All right, let's see here, we've got Counselor Huff.
Yeah, I'm piggybacking with the Mayor Proton. That was my question about the seniors at Frank Chester, how it would affect them. Is that coming?
That's part of the senior citizen slide, it's coming a little bit later.
Okay, thank you.
But I think the confusion comes into place, because most recreation centers have programs that are dedicated to senior citizens as well, in addition to what senior centers have.
Okay. And we have Counselor Davis.
Dr. Warsley, just flipping through here, looking at, since we're on the subject of looking at changing the schedules and eliminating hours, I'm guessing that... And keep in mind, we don't...